Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. It's Friday, September 9th, 5:09. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Four selectmen are present. Mr. Rooney, Mr. Semino joining me here. Mr. Kalenda is joining us by telephone. Mr. Rooney is here.
Can we confirm? Let's just, Dan, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Yeah, yes, I'm good.
Very good. Mr. Rooney is here to establish a quorum in the room, but consistent with his other positions relative to this topic, will be recusing himself. All right. So, this topic came up during public comment Tuesday night during our meeting. Mr. Morris asked us again for consideration of the planning board request for special counsel. The one, I'd say the reason that we did not take a vote, there were questions that a couple of us had of town council. Town council was not present. So, again, we're all, every, this is all under a tight timeframe. And the reason that we're meeting at this time now, by the time I could coordinate with the town administrator on Wednesday due to my work schedule, this was the earliest that we could set a meeting. I did want to set a meeting. I did not think that it would be appropriate to borrow a football term to take a knee and let the clock run out on this and not take any action. So, we are here to take a vote and give you an answer, Mr. Morris. So, if I could ask a question of you, Mr. Morris. Just want to clarify, yeah, we'll need a microphone, just to clarify the request and the reason for it again, one more time. And I want to balance that against the conversation I had with town council earlier.
Thank you. Don Morris, Planning Board. First of all, thanks a lot for doing this. This is really, you know, Friday at 5:00.
Yep.
So, appreciate you squeezing it in. And I appreciate you letting me speak on Tuesday for as long as I did. And then your comments just a minute ago, Mr. Morris, it's not me. It's, I'm one of five.
It's the planning board.
It's the whole planning board, and it, I'm telling you that it's all five.
Yep.
All in agreement as to what I'm saying and the direction that we're going in. So, it's not, it's not just me.
Yep, understood.
So, the question again was...
So, and I just want to confirm, Dan, you're hearing all this? You can hear Don?
Yes, I can. Not well, but I can hear him.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah, maybe come up here.
It'd be better to come closer.
He's moving to the front table, Dan.
Moving closer, Dan, can you hear me?
That sounds better, Don.
Okay.
All right. So, the request for special counsel, your, the planning board's request for special counsel would be for, just, just one more time if you could summarize it briefly.
As we, as we stated on Tuesday, the planning board needs, we have questions, we have concerns, and we need some guidance.
Yep.
We've gone as far as we can with our consultant. We're at the point where we need legal answers, answers to our questions that cross over into, you know, legal, the legal, legal area that our consultant reminds us that she's not a lawyer.
Yep.
And so, we, it's at that level. So, those questions, those concerns, and the guidance is a, the initial step where we would retain an attorney, go over those questions, concerns, and areas where we feel we need legal guidance, and determine if the, if an appeal in any area is appropriate.
So, and you also made the statement the other night that the planning board cannot appeal the 40B decision? Is that correct?
That's my understanding that the planning board cannot appeal the 40B. And we have no intention to do that.
So...
We agree with that. Our appeal, if there was an appeal, would be relative to the 40A project and the components of the use variance, particularly, I think there were 17 waivers within the use variance that were directed toward the 40A project.
Okay. So, the decision that was filed and that the appeal deadline is next week, that was on the 40B, correct?
That's what we were told.
So, why the time, if you can't appeal the timeframe, oh, if you can't appeal the 40B, why is there a time constraint on the planning board's action?
The, because it was all linked by the ZBA and the proponent to the 40B, and from earlier, the earliest days of this, the planning board suggested and later strongly, I guess, insisted that the 40A be separate. But it never was. It was always attached to the 40B. So, I guess at times we felt that the 40B was used as an umbrella to protect the 40A portion of it. It seemed like the line was blurred when we were talking about the 40A and the 40B. And then when we were just talking about the 40B, the line was a hard line. Oh, no, we're just talking about 40B. But then we started talking about townhouses and other things, the line was blurred. I know town council and others have used the term that it's a integrated site, I think. Is that right? Is that the term that we're using? Integrated site?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, those, those are terms that are put out there and are included within our desire to get clarity from council.
Mr. Morris, can I ask you a question if I may chime in?
Yep, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. So, I understand that it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that while a board can appeal another board's decision, that judges have found, or at least have obtained, that that should be incredibly rare for one board to appeal another board's decision. And instead, isn't it much more appropriate for any appeal to come from the citizens themselves? If the citizens, residents wanted to appeal, isn't that by far the more appropriate level of appeal than one board appealing another board's decision?
This is an area that I'm not familiar with, and that's one of the reasons myself and the, and the rest of the planning board were not familiar with that. As far as the...
So, I had an opportunity to speak with Aldo earlier today, and I'm under the impression, number one, that that is correct, that it is, would be incredibly rare, and, you know, for a board to appeal another board's decision, but it's much more appropriate if a resident or a group of residents wanted to do it. So, that's number one. But, and then number two is, hasn't he already provided lengthy guidance to the planning board, both verbally as well as in writing regarding inquiries that the planning board has had on procedural, procedurally what took place?
Well, I don't, I don't recall all of the guidance that, or the questions or requests or guidance that we received from town council. Certainly respect everything that he has told us, but what's, what's crystal clear is that he cannot support the planning board's need for legal help. And it, our approach is that it is completely inappropriate to have the planning board, to have the planning board go along with the questions and the concerns that we have and be unable to get the legal support that you as selectman, the ZBA as a separate entity, and all the other town boards have, and to have the planning board, again, with all of our questions, concerns, and need for guidance, to be denied the same legal support that everyone else gets. And if the reason is because...
Yeah, so it's my understanding, though, that not only has he already provided guidance, both in writing and as well as verbally, but he still remains available to do that. And that's, and the hardest, the hard part for me that I, you know, I haven't gotten over this hump yet is, and it, and it, I'm not seeing really any material differences between the last vote that we took on this and this one, is, you know, we potentially then are going to put ourselves down a path of having, you know, two lawyers for, you know, advising on behalf of the town, a town board, pitting one board against another when, when, you know, that's actually the last thing that I think that we'd be wanting to do. And we've got town council as a civil team, he has already provided you, to your board, any...
Hey, Dan, you're breaking up a little bit.
Dan, Dan, we lost like the last 30 seconds of what you said. We've lost Dan.
Well, let's hang up and call him back.
Suggest that.
Shall we take a recess for as long as this takes?
Yes. We will recess until we can get selectman Kalenda back on the line. Dan, you're breaking up. We're back.
All right.
Go ahead, Dan. So, I guess...
So, anyway, I, hopefully you caught some of what I'm, what I'm trying to communicate, but I, I think I've made my point.
So, Mr. Chair?
I'd like to be able to support what Don is asking for, but I, I'm afraid that it can, it may very well do, potentially, it's unprecedented and could potentially do a lot more harm than good, and the fact that he's still available to you, and the fact that an appeal by a board, while, while surely they can do it, would be incredibly rare and is actually, I believe, frowned upon by the courts, although it's allowed, and it's more appropriate to come from the resident.
Good. Dan, I'm sorry, Paul.
So, I believe that the decision to, whether to act on any advice that the planning board may get from counsel, whether to seek that advice versus continuing to seek advice from town council, is best left with the planning board, who after all is an elected board with every much, every bit as much sovereignty to the voters as this board. I think it's a peculiarity of the town code that even has us sitting here. I believe it's, the reason we are in the approval seat here is fiscal. I don't see anything in the town code other than what I infer to be control of expending funds on town council or other council unnecessarily. I, back in May, when, or June, when we first took a vote on this, there was a ways to go in the process, and I had hopes for a path that that process would take with regard to the three entities involved, the ZBA, the planning board, town council. I don't, I don't think it went quite the way I thought it might. What I'm not suggesting is that granting this permission to the planning board is any type of referendum by this board as to the propriety of the ZBA's process or decision, because I'm not suggesting that. The propriety of any appeal that might be taken by any town board entity or private citizen, or the merits of that appeal if one were to be taken. I'm not suggesting any of that. But I am suggesting that I trust the planning board to go into this step with judicious thinking and representing the voters that elected them, and for, you know, to the, to the point, for example, that to take an appeal is very rare and frowned upon by the courts. I don't have any reason to doubt that, Dan. I assume if that's true, that that's the advice they will get. So, I am in favor of this request, and I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Shea.
Motion was made. Is there a second?
Well, I want to make one if...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, my motion is that in accordance with Chapter 27, Section 7 of the town code, that we authorize the planning board to retain counsel to advise it with regard to issues related to the Park Central project and the approval of it.
Park Central project. You have that written down?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I think that...
It hasn't been seconded yet. For discussion, I will second it. Go ahead.
I think that sounds like appropriate language because we know that the planning board cannot appeal the 40B. So, with that type of language, what, whatever components of the Park Central project other than the 40B would be within that motion.
That's certainly my intention, yes.
And that's the way we would look at it, too.
And you still have ongoing reviews with the proponent on this project, correct?
Site plan.
So, that this, the decision that was it, the 40B decision does not preclude your board from continuing its, its action on this project?
Correct. We're still, still in the middle of the site plan review, just a separate step.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate one thing I said on Tuesday, which is, the, the, taking of advice from counsel by the planning board and a decision ultimately by the planning board to take any further action are two completely different things. And again, I trust them to know the difference, and I trust them to approach all of it very judiciously in accordance with their duty to the voters who elected them.
So, Paul, I don't disagree with that. I'm not going to be, I don't, I'm, I'm not in support of this. I think it's incredibly dangerous and, and I think the, the end, the end result is, is, you know, I think Mr. Morris said it well last time, that he, he hopes that there's, there is no reason and there's nothing to appeal. Well, if there is, you know, we've got, we have to take it to its logical conclusion, and then what do we have? We have two boards pitted against each other and two councils pitted against each other. We've got one town council who is, has and remains available, provided guidance to the planning board, and again, I reiterate, already has. I spoke with them at length today and already has provided both verbal and written guidance, and it still remains available to do that. I think it would be a dangerous precedent for this board to, to go down and for the town to go down, and I cannot support it.
Yeah, I actually don't disagree with any of that, Dan. I, all I'm saying, I'm simply saying that the decision to take us down that road should be the planning board's in their sovereignty and not ours in, in sort of approving their counsel. So, that's where I come out.
I'd just like to say a couple of things and then I'm...
Go ahead, Don.
Unless you ask me more questions. First of all, Mr. Kalenda, most of what he said I agree with. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, the planning board cannot control the citizens' actions relative to an appeal. I'm unaware of any appeal that citizens are preparing or have done. I have no knowledge of that, or if, if it ever will happen. Town council has been here in this room in front of the board of selectmen, in front of the planning board, and as recently as 3:45 on Tuesday afternoon, on the phone with me, told me he cannot advise the planning board in this regard. Real simple. And I agree with Mr. Kalenda, and that's why this is so rare, because we usually are able to work, work it out. And usually when there are concerns about process and jurisdiction, they're minor and we can work around them. So, I agree with Mr. Kalenda in that it is not a good thing to have one board analyzing or contradicting or even being... or contradicting or even being pitted against another board. But I also believe that it's far worse to have these questions, have concerns, have open items relative to the process and jurisdiction. It's far worse for an elected board to do nothing. And that's why we're asking to get counsel and allow us to get independent guidance and responses to our concerns and questions.
So, it all happened just as I got onto the board, but as the, the use variance was approved back in 2015 in May, did the Planning Board consider an appeal of that decision at that time?
Yes, but we decided not to because we figured that we could work it out, like we had in the past in other, other times when we've had jurisdictional or process questions or concerns. But those were very minor things compared to this. It's the largest project in the history of the town, 10% of the town's population, two and a half year process over many, many public hearings where we feel that procedural errors were made. This is a completely different thing. And it's funny that we're, we've been asked over the last probably 15 months since the use variance was approved, why we didn't appeal it. So, and here we are now trying to do just that, and we're, it's frowned upon. So, it seems like you wanted us to appeal it. If we thought we should appeal it, we should have done it back then, which we didn't. And now because we want to appeal it, or we may want to appeal it, it's, it's not a good idea. You can't have it both ways. I just, I don't think that's an appropriate question. Why didn't you appeal it way back then? We've answered that a number of times. We thought, we thought it would get better, we thought we could work it out, and what happened was it just got worse since the, since the use variance. Additional waivers were granted, and the final vote and document that was signed by the ZBA last week contains even more language of concern, especially the one where it, it refers to any waivers not granted in this document but may be granted in, in the future are, are approved, wide open.
I, I think Mr. Shea's question is appropriate. I also think you've given a very good answer.
Okay, it was an appropriate case.
All right. So, the motion was made, seconded. Is there any more discussion? It's, all right, so this needs a roll call vote. Dan, I assume you're still there, correct?
I am.
Shea, no.
Semino, aye.
Kalenda, no. Kalenda, no.
Yeah, yeah, I'll move to adjourn. I, I, you know what? I will say, I, I think we are acting through what was essentially an artifice in the Town Code to interpose our authority onto the Planning Board's authority, and I'm disappointed that that's how we ended up. I'm not, I'm not suggesting how the Planning Board should go on this, but that's just the whole point. I think they should have the ability to do it. In effect, I, I will, well, I can't. I lost. I can't move again. But I won't move to adjourn because maybe you or Dan will re-raise my motion. So, one of you guys will have to adjourn.
So, Mr. Shea, I will move to adjourn?
Those in favor? Aye.